And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Pam McNamara.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams. Keith Buckles.
Here.
Do we have a move to accept the minutes from the May fourteen?
No move.
Any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Planned agenda items, A subdivision plot for fifteen lots, applicant pretty sharp urban engineering, tax map zero one seven, parcel zero fifty five point zero zero, located one four three five oh, North Shore Drive, A two rural residential district, District six, approximately seventy eight and a half acres. Mister Sharp here.
Yeah, I'm Brad Sharp, I'm representing urban engineer.
Okay, what you got?
I mean, pretty straightforward, like you said, fifteen lots on roughly eighty acres, so, you know, large lots. Do you have any questions about it specific?
Is everything in order, Jim, you think?
Everything's in order, these are, these are, basically they're putting in the infrastructure, a road, to the county standard, except they're not looking to do curb and gutter, just doing ditches, rather than curb and gutter, there's no detention, engineered calculation showed no need for detention of water, and last but not least, no sidewalks, again, these are five acre plus tracts. Everything else appears to be.
Utilities, that water, sewer, all?
In place. In hated, shown, yes sir.
Yeah, and they've been approved by TDA.
In the process.
In the process, okay. That was my only question, were they in utilities, so? You, you have any problem with it?
Yes sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Got a move in a second, any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Okay.
B rezoned requests from C two to R one applicant property owner, Ally Rosen, Roseborough, tax map zero one five M, group A, parcel zero zero four point zero zero, located one hundred and three Robinson Drive, C two general commercial district two, approximately one point two two acres. This is Roseborough.
Yes. I wanted to put in a new home, and when I came to get it from him, they told me I had to section it off to make part of it for R one. And I did, I got a survey and sectioned it off. It has water and sewer right at the road. So I don't know if there's gonna be a problem with that, I hope not.
You're right next to Highland Park School, isn't that?
Yes, and church.
Church or a close to church.
We also have the greenhouses that we sell out of, so we want to keep that other section, C two. I don't know if that's gonna be a problem. I think I was told it had to have two acres, and I think the survey did that, left it two acres.
Do you have anyone weigh in on this?
Yeah, so she is looking to put another home as she explained, so she's showing a plot of a proposed area that they're looking to rezone, it's a portion of that property, about one point two acres to R one, which is suitable, you know, in that area, adjacent properties are R one. Currently, the property is on C two, but there is a dwelling on the property, and it's also being used in a commercial manner. And speaking with her, their intent would be to, once they put the new home, if they get rezoned R one, place a new home on this, and then cease using the current home on the C two portion, bringing that property into compliance.
Yeah, it was my understanding we cannot live in that mobile home that's currently on there.
And of course, when we moved there, we had no idea that we weren't in compliance, this has been like seven, eight years.
Mm-hmm.
So you're residents now in that home?
Yes.
But you're gonna remove that home after this home set?
I hadn't planned on it, but, I mean, it's a cost. I mean, we could use it for storage. We have dirt pots, et cetera, that we could put in it.
So you wanna use it?
Seed building.
So you wanna use it as a commercial building?
Yes, with the C two.
Right.
If that's profitable.
I have no problem taking it out.
But I can't do it right away, because it's too costly.
You, you don't see any need to take it out, is it?
It does have to be removed, no sir.
Yeah. I don't see any need to, as long as it's gonna use for commercial. I know, to me, there was a little bit of difference in the acreage between the survey and maybe the tax, the property assessors, it was about three tenths of an acre or something, but it probably didn't make a lot of difference, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure where that difference is coming, I do know she did provide a survey that showed the two lots. And of course, when we take this forward, it'll be to rezone approximately, you know, one point two acres, using this plot as showing what we're actually rezoning.
You don't have any problem with it?
I do not.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, got a move in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. C has been scratched, we go to D. Rezone requests from A two to A three applicant property owner, Mark Costner, tax map zero fifty seven, parcel two eight six point zero one, located two eleven forty five Sticky Road, A two rural residential district, District four, approximately four point seven six acres. This is Mister Costner here, I represent him.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I'm Gary Whitfield, I'm here for Mister Costner, he's lucky, he's in a mobile home, head to Colorado at this point, so... What he is asking to do is to separate, rezone to A three, one acre, and that piece of property was gonna be given to his daughter for her to establish a home set on that one acre.
For just, just rezoning one acre?
Yes sir.
Let's have the whole pile up?
And in my discussion, then, I suggested he rezone the whole property, because at the time, he had mentioned, he owns an adjacent tract.
Right.
And he's trying to create some buffer, which would take off a little strip, and I told him, rather than try to figure out if you got two and a half dead on or not, rezone the whole thing, his intent isn't to go up there, create a big subdivision, as I understand.
Well, he's only got five acres, so he only did five lots.
It was my recommendation, rezone the whole thing.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Same, got a move in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Number four, county commission action on county commission recommendations, Jim, you got anything?
We didn't have anything.
Five, coach department building activity summary for May twenty twenty four.
I don't have anything additional to add.
Any comments, additional comments from the public? Update from the planning department?
Nothing to add at this time.
Do I have a move to the drug business committee?
Mister Chairman, if I could, just a second, I think we may have somebody in the back, maybe wanna possibly avoid some concerns about a possible future item, Mister Walker, you wanna speak today?
Actually, I think, I think Doctor Kernick was gonna speak.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, would you entertain that right now?
Yes, we will.
I apologize for not having ever been before you before, and thus, don't quite know the decorum.
We don't have to vote on this, do we, just go with this?
They just wanna, just the public.
I do have some additional information on trap jump drive, if that's helpful, if not, I have the ball, not knowing how many members of you here, I have brought five, I'm gonna give your mind, if you don't mind.
I'd like to share.
Thank you very much.
Let us share.
Passing down, thank you. I appreciate it. Working from memory, let's set this up first, my name is Tom Kernick, I own property across the lake, from Mister Gaddis's marina that he hopes to build there. I've been there since nineteen ninety three. I have the privilege of representing twenty-two people on my side of the lake, and roughly twenty-nine people that yesterday I met with on the Friendsville side of the lake. In short, what we would like to do is make sure that neither you nor us are being hoodwinked in this regard. In your pamphlet, first of all, just to let you know, the importance is a picture of bald eagle taken by Bill Stokely this year on his property, I myself have seen bald eagles, it's a rare event, it's a special event, they do, they are there, they do nest. I understand that that can cause some concern to the environmentalists. Second, for me, the biggest problem with potential hoodwinking is the fact that on page two of your pamphlet, labeled up in the top right-hand corner is two thousand and twenty, was what Mister Gaddis requested of you, and by you, I'm sorry, the government, I'm not sure of which agency, four in one, and I thank you for your leniency there. But he requested roughly a two hundred and fifty, and if I can, that's the two thousand twenty-four, do you mind, sir, going to the other similar map?
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, yes sir, and if I can, I'm assuming we're reasonably cordial, I can go over here and point, thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't.
I don't believe this. Is there another one?
Can try. Just taking, yes sir, that's it, and I'm sorry that it's taking a lot of load. So, the map, the item number two there is the one that actually is, was requested in two thousand twenty, it's my understanding, from Mister Gaddis. And if you could scroll this, perhaps, to, we have this, so just to orient you, because I'm not that skilled with maps either, in short, you have the land here and here, you have the shoreline here, and he requested roughly two hundred and fifty feet of a private dock, and apparently that was granted in two thousand twenty. However, we're not sure that due process has been followed thereafter, if I can, could you go to what you had? You'll notice that much more extravagant than that map is the other map. And in short, to reorient you, this was the two hundred and fifty foot dock that now is clearly labeled as three hundred and ten feet, you'll notice that the one singular two hundred and fifty foot dock now has a total of four, one, two, three, four fixed docks, some of which are, like I say, over three hundred feet versus the two fifty that he had requested earlier. In addition, there's some dredging there in the peach color, or whatever it is, that's there. And this, our concerns are that perhaps the process wasn't followed through, and that appropriate people haven't been made aware that this is just kind of, oh, I got approval in two thousand twenty, I'll just add a few things and see, and hope that things go through. In that regard, the, the community would also like to express concern in the fact that we're really not, we'd like to see, one, a community meeting with, with the public in this regard, and to perhaps also see the studies, who authored the studies that said that this was safe, that this was quote, "of the minimus factor in regard to the environment, in regard to the water quality, in regard to the wildlife, in regard to lake pollution, et cetera." And we, we would just hope to ask, ideally for a reversal back to the two thousand twenty plot that was there again, and I'm sorry, if you could go back to the other one, I thank you, and I'm sorry to make you work for me.
Yeah.
But to go back to that, in which case, I think everybody on both sides of the lake would say, look, it was authorized, it was approved, no hoodwinking done, go for it. If, if we can't get that, is it possible to get a stay of execution, if you will, can we get a, an extension? Can we get a town meeting? All those things would be very, very helpful for those of us, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to you, I know that this was put in on the end of the agenda, out of courtesy, I try to keep this short, but I would love to entertain any questions that you have.
How far is he in the construction now?
It's my understanding, there's zero construction that's been at the actual lakefront, of course, you know, he can do things on the land as far as, you know, hey, took out some trees and things of that nature, but nothing substantial. Also, you'll notice one other thing, and I appreciate that your representative, Mike Waller, is here, and we appreciate him as well. Your last page represents his concern as written to Bill Stokely, and although I don't have that handy to read word for word...
That's, that's, that's my son.
That's your son?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's all, that's all right, we both have the same name, Mike.
And that's Adam, I, I apologize.
That's no problem.
At least I feel that at least his title and if not his name is recognized, so it's not just that, and I believe Adam Waller, and I apologize.
That's no problem.
I believe he said, quote, "we vehemently," thank you very much, sir.
This is, they've been, they've applied for a TBA twenty-six act permit, what brought this on. So that's where it's at in the process, TBA is reviewing it.
Yes, sir, it's my understanding as well, that's correct, but the bottom line from Mister Adam Waller of the sixth district says, quote, "we vehemently oppose the proposal submitted to TBA," that's highlighted for you there, thank you for letting me directly quote. Again, I'd love to entertain any questions.
Mister Chairman, from my knowledge of it, and of course, I've received several calls and some emails that corresponded with the people that live in the residence, I think the people that's here tonight, although it's nothing to do with the agenda, they are under the, the understanding, there's some kind of public comment period that stops literally at midnight.
June twenty-fourth, I think.
So they were worried that the planning commission may be voting on something tonight, and of course, they want to come and voice their concerns, but they've raised some other questions that my curiosity has, is it something that the planning commission even hears, or is it something TBA approves or denies?
Originally, it was through BCA, it was the BCA.
For the marina use.
Use, right.
But when I read the TDA, TBA standards, they regulate anything up to the watermark.
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty, so I'm, I'm curious if the planning commission really only gave the variance for the marina use for the, the residential partial, but everything else is something that the customers probably need to reach out to TBA and try to comment. So I understand your concerns, I'm just worried, it's either, all they've asked us for is, is the marina use, I don't think we regulate any of that, do we, Jim?
That is correct.
So I feel like your voices need to be heard quickly to TBA, because unfortunately, if you just wanted to have the, your personal partial have a variance request for that marina, we could grant the marina, but it's TBA that's gonna approve or deny your request, and I think they need to hear your voices, and I think they need to hear them quickly.
Would you mind also perhaps advising us further as to one contact person, you can understand, TBA is a very large...
I know, I know dock permits and marina permits are very specific, I would probably start with the land management office in Lower City up here, off of Interstate Lane, behind Ruby Tuesday's, Crystal, TBA has a land management office there, and I would probably reach out to them and find out who the source is, now, I know the Corps of Engineers, a lot of times when we involve waterways and stuff of that nature, the Corps of Engineers also has a percentage of interest there, and I probably wouldn't just stop at TBA, I'd start with the Corps as well.
Is that office still open? I thought they moved them downtown.
I, I don't know, I just know they, they used to have a land management office.
Yeah, they did, but I don't think it's there anymore.
Are you saying, please forgive me, Mister Waller, are you saying that TBA has moved, or the Army Corps of Engineers has moved, I'm sorry?
The Army Corps of Engineers still out.
The Army Corps of Engineers made office is next to the post office off of Desseaux Drive.
That's the boulevard.
The TBA land management office used to be behind Ruby Tuesday's on Interstate Lane.
And hasn't made it.
Now whether they're there or not, I apologize, I don't know, Mister Walker.
I'm pretty sure they have moved downtown to the tower. If you can give me some contact information, I can give you a couple of names of people that you might be able to contact.
Sure, sir. I could give you my business card?
I'd be, we'd probably...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
No, no problem. I'm sorry, we probably couldn't help you as much as we hoped we could, but as Lachlan says, I don't know what we would do to look at it, because we don't ever go through a site plan review of it once it's, once it's approved, back then, and I don't, I don't, I wasn't on the BCA at that time, but I don't know what it was approved for.
Our concern is just that...
For sure.
Is that, yeah, it was approved for two hundred and fifty feet, and now we've got a thousand feet.
I remember the, the request, and I read back on my notes before the meeting tonight, and, and I was one of the ones, I thought he was one of the ones that made a motion, anyhow, it was a private access gated restricted seasonal thing that the property owners in the neighboring areas agreed upon. That was, that, that's how some of the language in my notes read, it was private, the residents in the area agreed upon it, there was no contest.
It wasn't a commercial.
It wasn't, it, it was, I think it even said gated and private, those were two of the key words in the motion.
Versus now being commercial marina.
So what's happened is, they've come to this, this board and got the variance for the, the marina, but the design of the marina is, I don't think falls under Jenkins's review, I think that goes to TBA, so.
The marinas.
I'm sorry.
What he does on land will come back before us, but the docks themselves.
When I was reading into it, TBA has certain restrictions as far as if it's within the, the eight twenty line, can't have a second story, you know, I, I just tried to do a crash course on it today, there's a lot of regulations there, but I didn't read any regulations as far as limiting the number of docks, so I think...
If he gets that rezoned, excuse me, could he possibly put something like a Calhoun's up there?
Probably won't get it rezoned to allow something like that.
My understanding from the research I've done today, he is trying to market, when I say he, the property owner, is trying to market and sell the partial, so I don't know if they're trying to sell it to another person trying to build a marina. But my, my interpretation of my mo, my, I can't remember if I motioned it or seconded it, it said it was to approve a private marina, so I think that the motion that the planning commission gave could eliminate any kind of public, public structure there, because it plainly states, private in our motion.
Mister Shields, thank you very much, Mister Waller as well, everybody, thank you.
I'll be, I'll take a question more.
You will?
I think I motioned very soon.
Maybe in here.
We'll get back to the regular agenda, do I hear a motion for this body to adjourn?
A second.
Second or second? Move to second, all in agreement, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
The narrative of it being it's plainly stated that it's private, and, and, I'm sorry, I don't have it in, it's private, and it's something to do with... Sorry, I didn't know what the person said.
And he's talking that it's only gonna be for them, well, that's what he first said, no, it's not, he can open it up to anybody, people can use it, ramp into the lake, he can charge electric, and it's just a trailer.
Pass for me, gay. It is. And if nothing else, you know, just for the process, see what the code, you know, the regs call, you need to have some...
That's the one that was made.
Well.
But my, my, I can't...
I'm like, I'm like...
Is he more to say? Somebody's gonna go along. But anyway, it's a, it's a...
He's a busy man, and if somebody, I'll take some time.
See, that's where the old rich camp is, they said, be that one.
I mean, he's, they're, they're...
It's sad.
All my friends, they were here.
Hopefully we'll get it done. So you do.
Give me a second. I enjoyed you. I know you always gotta go in people, particularly letting Doctor Kernick speak.
Good luck in your TBA's...
Hey, my, my luck is about getting along with my wife and my neighbor both.
You live in Elam Town?
No, actually, Sydney, Elam, that's why, Timmy lived there, we bought, Dr. I said, something.
I thought you had a...
And Sydney, no, well, let me back this, Jim, you know, it's all... So he lives in the one lake.
You live in the original?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Your house looks good though.
Well, and the view.
There's something like go down there fishing dock.
He was in the boat.
That Martin guy that bought that house?
I'm sorry.
Who was that Martin guy that bought that house?
Well, Jim Martin, I know.
I don't see how many, that's what we talked about. Get Johnny, tighten up, get up there. Lady Carl, Loudon County Board of Zoning Appeals, the order, roll call.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Anybody that's gonna talk in this meeting, stand up, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you may now give in the court is pending before this commission be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Everybody ready to minutes? I am, and I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items. A, variance request to build accessory structure in the front setback, applicant Matthew Hicks, tax map zero five six, parcel one one four point zero zero, located four seven five zero Callaway Road, A two RE Rural Residential District, single family exclusive overlay district, District four, approximately one acre. Mister Hicks.
Yes.
Tell us what you got, come up here and tell us what you got.
So my wife and I built, or had a carport put in, and after having the carport put in, it's a couple weeks later, we had a, Larry Mel saying we need a permit, the guy that done the concrete, obviously didn't need a permit, that's my fault, I apologize, but I asked, we came to get a permit, and that was when I was told it wasn't far enough off the road. It's only point four foot off the road, and I believe you said, was it forty-two?
Forty.
Forty, I believe. Forty? Yeah, but it's already there now, so that's where we're at. It sets back farther than the house does right now, probably, I guess, an eight to ten feet back farther than the house sets back from the road. Up, up above the house, we couldn't, it's just so much slope, and we couldn't go back farther, obviously, because of property line, because of more slope, so.
Is the house too close?
The house, yeah, if you look at this property, this house has probably been there, I'm not sure how long, but the house is closer to the road than this building, so he has a driveway on the right-hand side that was concrete, and he's put his building there. So he has a driveway on the right hand side that was concrete and he's put his building there. And as he said, as you go on up the hill above his house, the, the lot just continues to slope. Uh, so either way, he has topographical issues in trying to do any type of, of building there. So he's just put it in his driveway.
It's obvious, when you, when you see the house, it's obvious that he has topographical issues and the house, and it, it's in line with, it. Even though it's out of, uh, out of variance or out of, uh, out of line, it, it looks good with the house in line with the way the house is with the road.
If he needs sixteen feet, is that what he needs?
If that's what you mean, yeah. Yeah, you said twenty four.
And the house is closer to the road than the, the building is.
Yeah, actually, the front porch is definitely.
Is it a garage or a carport or?
It's a detached accessory building, detached garage.
The house is like, it's like right on the road, just about. I mean, it's, it's very close, so. I, I, I would make a motion to, uh, uh, for this variant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Anybody got any more discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
It was likewise. Need to get a permit?
Yeah, I can get a permit.
B, variance request to replace existing mobile home with new dwelling. Advocate property owner James McMahon, tax map. Zero two four, parcel zero four seven point zero zero, located eight oh one Pine Grove Providence Road, A one agriculture forestry district, district five. Approximately eleven acres.
How's it going? Yeah, I'm James McMahon. Um, I wanted to put a new home on the property for me and my family, and there's an existing home there. And, um, I talked to Mr. Jenkins about putting the variance in, be able to put my new home on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I will aware of this property and, and spoke with the, the property owners, the neighbors, and commissioners in this area. They had donated some property to the church there. They're realigning and, and going to replace that home, so I'd make a motion to approve. I think it fits within our perspective.
Are you gonna stay in your mobile home until you get your house built?
It's, it is, it's foreclosed. I mean, I'm demoing the home as of speech.
Okay.
Get that demo and put the new home in the same spot.
Have you started construction on your new home?
No. I, I was going to get the building permit and, you know, it's two residences for one parcel, so.
Got it. You make a motion, Leo?
Okay.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
It was likewise.
Thank you.
C, variance request for twenty to twenty-five front yard setback. Advocate, Advocate property owner Stephen Riggs, tax map. Zero four nine, parcel one two four point zero one, located nine seven seven six Stinky School Road. A two rural residential district, district one, approximately four point five three acres.
Thank you. I'm Steve Riggs. Uh, we're building that house on the highlighted portion there. Uh, we own the property. Adjacent to it. Uh, we made a few phone calls and had a little bit of miscommunication, I guess. We were told that it'd be forty feet from the property line. However, our property line is actually the center of the road, not, uh. You know, however many feet that it usually is off of the street. I guess then back in the day, the road got put through the previous owners' properties or whatnot. So we are approximately forty-one feet to the front porch. Uh, the house across the street is forty-one or forty-six, and the adjacent house is forty-one. So we're kind of in line with that. We got our building permit. We drew that little plot out. We poured the foundation and then we kind of had a little conversation that, uh, that twenty-five foot, uh, variance, or whatever you call it.
Setback.
Setback. Forty foot plus twenty-five for the road. So we're asking for a variance so that, uh, concrete that's there is happy.
What, is he forty foot from the center of the road?
Count for you from the property line, so. The property line is the center of the road.
And you're forty feet off the property line?
Yeah, it's forty-one feet approximately.
But he's got a building permit?
He's got a building permit, yes.
How do you get a building permit?
Well, he shows a compliance site plan, that's how you got a building permit. Um, so. The survey, surveyed all the way to center line of the road, you know, dedication and right of way. So they pulled off the front property line rather than the right of way in this situation. Of course, uh, talking with the contractor, I wouldn't deny, he's probably called me. I try to tell people forty feet off front property line or right of way, I may have said property line. That's what they've done, not taken consideration of the right of way. It's a filled in, it's a bench dim pad. Of course, in, uh, in doing the footers, it's a compacted pad, so it's contractor elected to. Hire an engineer to evaluate the footings, since they're gonna have to do a compacted fill report already. So they poured the footers also. Prior to us knowing that it was in violation of.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a couple of questions. My curiosity is if he's going forty feet from the center line of the road, forty-one feet. I'm sure there's public utilities through that roadway that's gonna be right at the front door. And so my curiosity is, is how close are we to those utilities? Do we know?
We don't know. I know there's a, the property line, there's a, a telephone pole that runs that way. I've been told that gas is available there. Because recently the ninety-eight O eight has gas to it. Um, but I don't know the answer to those questions.
Is there sewer here?
Not with the, uh, we've already got the permit and stuff.
Septic. So really, he's got water and electric, probably maybe gas.
Yes.
How much front yard you got?
Looks like he's a double front.
That's four, that green shaded area is four and a half acres, so.
No, between your house and the road. How much, how much road?
Thirty feet, thirty.
Thirty feet?
There's, there are the twenty feet wide, so that's center of the road. There's eleven feet of road, and then he's forty-one feet, so he's thirty feet.
But the county up more, more twenty-five feet around way? Is that not what they usually?
Usually probably. Fifty foot, twenty-five off center line if, according to the highway department on that road, twenty-five feet off center line.
What's the forty feet here? That's forty feet from the center of the road.
Forty feet from the property line slash center of the road, yes, sir.
The only, you know. Hundred percent respect, I, I know, I know y'all build a lot of properties in North City. And I know some of those properties are right on the roadway, and those utilities are very, very tight in some of those structures. And especially for the church. So I just worry about if you've got this large of a track, you've got plenty of septic, and you're gonna have three hundred and seventy feet in the back. Do we want to penalize the front, put everybody else kind of in harm's way again on this development? With utilities, with the roadways, with the storm, any kind of other apartments that might be in the front, and leave that three hundred and seventy feet in the back just?
So to, to bring the pad up to the, uh, the street level, I guess, there, it slopes down significantly. We brought in a hundred and ninety-seven loads of dirt to make the pad as big as it is. So anything further, not even counting that the concrete's already poured, if we did anything more. It's just geometrically more dirt to fit the house and to fit the house, you know, that level now.
Is this a development or?
It's our house.
Is it in the, your house?
Yes, yes. And the, and I know it doesn't matter, but, you know, after we figured out this, I kind of looked around on Stinky School Road. And the house that's basically across the street is forty-six feet from the center of the road, and the house to the right there is forty-one feet to the center of the road currently.
So I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, let me ask another question, probably the most important that I've seen in the past. Once the first structure goes up, are you gonna come back for other approvals to be built in the backyard like on the other properties?
No, they, we bought it.
So this will be the only request to the planning commission?
They're actually gonna put a pond on the rest of it.
We wanted to have no neighbors there. So it was nine acres. There's four and a half that was a field and or a garden, you know, back in the day. And then from the other house that way, there's the house, and it's fairly wooded. There's a little meadow back there.
You have any other utilities at all?
There's water right at the road. Electric's overhead, and I don't have a clue where the gas is, but it's, it's gotta be right there close to the road. We actually had it spotted, so before we dug, everything is within two or three feet of the road.
So it's all close?
It's twenty feet, twenty-five feet from the house.
Anybody else? What do y'all think? What's your question? You said you hit three hundred and seventy loads of dirt.
Thirty-seven loads for compacted broad end to make the pad. The pad itself is a hundred and seventy-ish feet wide and goes back a hundred and twenty.
But this three hundred and seventy feet, that's level, you say? Behind it. Behind it.
Behind it, well, the property, so about where the little arrow is on the, on the map there, that would probably be right about where the, the pad now then drops back. Towards the end of, towards the backside of the property. If you're, if you're standing at the rear property line, the streets, I would guess twenty feet? Twenty feet above.
Steve, how big is the porch?
The porch is, uh, eight foot porch, and then there's either a two or four.
Eight foot of it is porch that's in that setback.
So that's on top, that's even closer to the mains?
No.
No, no, the.
That's behind the setback.
Forty-one feet is the last step coming off of the porch, and the porch is.
That's from the center of the road, though?
Yes, from the center of the road.
How much would it impose you if we asked for a recommendation from Loudon Utilities and, uh, the highway department to put you behind schedule?
Well, yeah.
We're already behind them. We got no choice.
Do you have a recommendation, Jim?
I don't, I don't understand how the confusion happens when you don't have dedicated right of ways on a new survey plat. But, and, and based on the way they're building these buildings, they are, uh, slab construction, I believe, for everything, so. And you can see the, the size and the way this building lays out. I do know that it is been a large fill of area. So he's right, it is probably, these buildings are extending to the backside of this field already. I don't know if the highway department's gonna be looking to do any widening of that road. I do just know that, uh, you know, like they said, about eight foot. Of that, uh, setback you show is, is covered porch, not building. So if you knock that off there, you'd be, almost be within your setback, right? If it wasn't for the covered porch.
The front door, I think, approximately fifty-three and a half feet from the center of the road.
So it'd be twenty-five feet till this main portion of it, off the right of way. Twenty-eight feet.
Are those houses on up Stinky School Road in compliance with, uh, the setbacks? Cause that's, there, there are a couple of houses up there when you turn off on Simpson Road, that's the next ride, isn't it?
So the house.
There's just one house there or two?
The, well, you can see the white house there. I, I didn't measure that one. I would, I would say it is not sixty-five feet, but I did not measure their house. The one that's up in the right corner there, yeah, that one there. If I was guessing, I would say it's. Mid-fifties, fifty, fifty-five, but I, I did not walk that. And I'm also not aware if their property line is the middle of the street, or if their property line is, you know, on this side.
Does this plat not show utilities, Jim?
No.
Then.
Somebody say something.
You building it up? Are you doing all the construction?
Um, yes, I'm involved.
My reluctance is, is I feel like that middle, Mr. Robinett and his work with the public utilities is always. Spot on me, always does the right thing on the end of projects that he's been involved with us. My worry is, the previous general contractor that you had necessarily didn't, didn't follow those rules or those guidelines, had a lot of issues out of that last property. So I'm torn between my vote of, I would approve it if I felt like that the general contractor on site. That was the responsible operator of that site, took in consideration Loudon Utilities and all the, the other parameters that you're battling here, that you've done the same thing on Hickman Street. My vote would be to deny if you didn't have a quality contractor to make sure that was charged and public governmental infrastructure wasn't damaged or, or torn or built on top of it. That's where my vote is.
Mr. Robinett has been in the business for thirty years, you know him.
And, and by all means, I as a planning commissioner can't tell you who to choose. I'm just judging my vote on previous occurrences by you.
You got a motion? You got a motion?
What do you think, Waller?
I'm kind of like you. I'm worried about the utilities, but can you verify that with?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I am gonna build it for him. I'll make sure it gets built right.
And you understand, I've got water infrastructure underneath the front porch of a patriarch church. I've got water meters underneath the deck. I don't want Loudon Utilities to inherit the same issues if I have the possibilities of stopping it. He wouldn't have done that, so.
Well, how much would it put you behind if you get the utility speak to come out there and make that?
I mean, he can do that. We can, can we make that as a condition of our motion that he get the utilities contacted?
I think, I think the realistic thing, as you know, and the, and the correct thing to do is to make sure nothing is being built inside any easement or right of way owned by any public entity. That, that would be Loudon Utilities, that would be the highway department. There's a storm tile there. If he's got a fifteen foot easement, planning commission doesn't need to grant you to build a front porch on top of it. So my opinion would be, we need the feedback of the public utilities, Loudon, the highway department, et cetera, contingent upon the motion made tonight.
You want to talk about?
Yeah.
I'm good anyway. I mean, just make it contingent upon, all those bodies have to report directly to Jim.
You gonna make that in the form of a motion?
I'll make it in the form of a motion.
I will back, I will second your motion.
If you contact the public utilities and the highway department to make sure that there's no issues regarding his building location.
Did you say there was a storm down there?
I'm just saying, we're hypothetically playing in here.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Anybody else? If that's gonna throw you way behind, I'm sorry, but that looks to me like that's the wise thing.
You should be able to have those answers tomorrow by noon if you reach out to them, tutor them.
Do I have to come here next month, or if the, the two entities?
His motion was contingent upon, so it's approved as long as tutor gets the go at it.
We got a load on it, man.
Yeah.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
But if you just show the record, I'm staying my vote.
Anybody else got anything? You got any public, Jim?
I, I don't have anything for you.
The doctor would like to at least make, you wanna speak just real quickly?
Oh, it's very quick. I understand if you five, we're all here, uh, on the last minute. I, I would just like to state it for the record, and I appreciate the secretary wording in. At whatever shortness you can, uh, to say that basically, uh, I'd like to represent my views again, that I'm just concerned. Uh, both sides of late are concerned as regard to Mr. Gaddis's marina, previously authorized as a private dock, at two hundred and fifty feet now having been foreclosed.
But, but TBA is your problem. You don't need me talking to us.
I hear you loud and clear, sir. I, I just wanted to cross all of these. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Am I making motion, Mr. Jim?
I so love you.
All in favor of saying aye? All the favor say aye.